Hi, Joma. Good afternoon.
Hi, Jiro. Good afternoon.
You've been, yeah, I've been trying to look for this meeting link. So apparently my network. Empty and I think they blocked the hook in here. My VPN is not connecting. So I just had to. The link for a document I saved it in.
You don't have, you don't have it on your calendar?
I do, I do. I really don't know why it didn't come up, so.
Oh. When I joined, I thought maybe we're not going to have this call today, cause.
We didn't have.
Nobody has said anything on the group.
We didn't have. Speak, right? It's, it's like bi-weekly.
Hello.
Hello.
It's Stacy. Sorry, I'm logged in as the.
Yeah, I wanted to ask.
Oh, um. Yeah, sorry, I was a little late, but. Hey, Marcela.
Just trying to, it's fine.
Hi, Marcela.
Hello. Hi, Joma. It's been a while.
Yeah, I've been busy traveling and trying to put my life together.
Yeah, I've seen you've been going to a few conferences that takes so much time and energy. It's, yeah. But I, I hope you've been, uh. I hope you've, you've been getting what you want out of those, you know, like. The connections.
Yeah, I have, I have. I'm, I was supposed to be traveling today, but. My visa was denied, so I'm just at home.
Where are you going?
South Africa.
Okay. I think I had seen your LinkedIn post about that.
Yeah, yeah, it's for PyCon Africa. I got a grant as well.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, that's a huge shame. Um. Yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, they don't have um a remote track, so I had to tell them to get me off the schedule since I won't be coming. We'll try again next year.
Anyway. Uh, what's on the agenda today? Um. Okay. So. I don't have much for today. Um. So I will. I think just. Can recap the um blog post that went out. Um, last week, right, or two weeks ago already? Uh, Jiro, you're. I, I cannot keep track of time. Um. But there's still the third one that's on, um, like, pending, right?
Yeah, there is. I, unfortunately, I was not able to make some details I was supposed to make on the third one because. I have an exam coming up, so I'm trying to like prepare for it, but I would do that before the week runs out, hopefully.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Um. So. Part three um is. In-flight. Um, I'm going to just move this over here. Okay, yeah, no problem. Um, just going down, um. Okay, um, and then the other um. Piece that I wanted to bring up is. Uh, we have the next office hours scheduled for October. Thirty or October twenty-third. It's probably the twenty-third. Um. That's the AI one, right? Um. What I will say is that I got some interesting feedback from a few people um about our office hours. Uh. They. Didn't. Think that they could attend the office hours because. Um, they thought it was going to be like a Q and A kind of session. Uh, with specific questions, rather than actually just a panel, so, um. Maybe not until the end of this year, but maybe for next year, we can rename them or something. Um. Cause I thought that was kind of a big bummer.
Yeah, that's too bad.
But, yeah, I think just, yeah, just the name Office Hours, I think, kind of threw off some people, and I didn't realize that was happening. Um.
Yeah, I could, I think we'll have to be creative on what we call them.
Yeah.
It was like a co- coffee talk or.
Yeah, fireside chat, people.
Fireside chats, yeah.
Um, maybe even just like co- um community hours. I'm not sure, even that sounds too, uh. Um, I mean, they're supposed to be educational. But, uh, yeah. We, yeah, we can, we can think about this some more. Um. So this is on securing the AI future. Um. And. Can you remind me, please, Stacy? We had some speakers for that one already or not yet?
Um, I think Miha said he's down for it.
Okay.
Um, was there anyone else, I think? Let me s- let me check. I think I posted a thread a while back, but yeah, let me, um. Let me go back and look through my notes. I don't, I don't have anything in particular written down, but I think I, I think I chatted with Miha and he said he would be up for it. Um, but I don't know who else might be, so I don't know if there's anyone that you might wanna ask. Um.
Yeah, I'm thinking, um. From the open source space, everything's relatively, I mean, at least in OpenSSF, a lot of the AI activities are. Um, kind of concentrated in the AI and ML working groups, so.
Should we just post a message there and ask?
Post a message there, yeah.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, um. Yeah, I will also say that I'm going to disappear for four weeks after the end of this week, so I'm not gonna be able to. Um, like attend or, or um like help much for, for the next office hour.
I hope that's a good thing.
Which is a bummer. Yes, yes, I'm going, I, I, I'm taking a four-week break.
Oh, that sounds lovely.
Yeah, I have a chunk of vacation that I have to take, like, as a four-week chunk, so.
Right, right, good for you. That's amazing.
Yeah, uh. Every seven years of. Yeah. So I guess in seven years or so, I'm gonna have another one of these chunks. It's nice, but it's a little bit too far apart. Um. So, okay, um. That is honestly all, all I had for today. Um, I was gonna say, oops. Um, releasing to host. Call for speakers, the AI and ML working group. Um. Okay. So. With that, um. You've reached the end of my agenda. Um. What do you, or do we have any, like, opens, any other business you want to cover?
Nothing from me, Ijoma or Jiro. Do you guys have anything? I will say that um CubeCon CFP is, uh. I think the European one is closing on the twelfth of October, so that would be my only reminder. If anyone wants to submit a talk for that.
Yeah.
It's enough for people that have expertise in Kubernetes.
Yeah, there's all kinds of different tracks, um. But yes, I mean, effectively, it's a, it's, it is Kubernetes-focused conference, but there is community tracks, um, there's security tracks and things like that, so.
Okay. I'll check it out.
Cool.
Yeah, you definitely should. Um, it's, um.
Okay, I think my night talk was a little bit off and I didn't get that, I only heard Ijoma said she would check something out. What is it about, please?
Uh, it's um Kubernetes, CubeCon.
Okay.
Um, Stacy was saying that the deadline for CFP is on the twelfth.
Second of this month?
Yeah. I, I think um CFP for Fostum is out as well. And if you're interested, you might want to check it out as well.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Um.
Okay, I can send you a DM, Ijoma, so we could talk about it later.
All right, no problem.
Okay.
If, uh, if you look in the CFP announce channel, there's a, a list of a few conferences that I put in there that I know have kind of upcoming. Uh, deadlines within the next, like, month or so. Um, and yeah, Fostum's definitely one of those on the list. Although I don't think I put CubeCon on there for some strange reason. I'll have to add that. There's also a, um, the VolnCon Africa Cert Symposium. That I think closes on the fourteenth. I don't know if that's applicable for either of you uh as well. I'll, uh, I'll copy these into the notes just so that they're there.
Okay, I've been taking a couple of notes here. Uh.
Oh, cool. Sorry, I wasn't.
I'm sure I missed a few. No worries. Um, yeah, and. So to your question, Ijoma, about, uh. Needing to have, um, like Kubernetes expertise. Um, one of the tracks for CubeCon. Uh, EU is the Cloud Native Experience and the Cloud, I guess there's two tracks, Cloud Native Experience and Cloud Native Novice. So, um. If you have more sort of community-oriented topics, maybe those would be suitable tracks for that. Um.
Okay.
And there's.
I think I have one, um, although I'm presenting it next month in Brazil, but I don't know if I want to. Try it again and see if they accept it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, i- it's totally up to you. Um, one thing that we could potentially do is, um, just submit like a bare working group panel. Um. Although I have to say, I don't really have the, the cycles to do that by the, by the twelfth in five days. Um.
Do you have any, um. Topic direction, like you want us, you know, the last time we, we tried with mentorship, although it didn't fly, um. So do you have any direction or, you know?
Yeah, I would honestly try the mentorship again, now that we had the summer mentorship program, the, the, the initial one in OpenSSF. Um, because then. We could not only talk about sort of general mentorship questions, but also about. Uh, yeah, that's sort of more hands-on training and coaching and. And how that went.
Okay.
Hmm.
Yeah. Um, but I think we would need to pull, because we have five days, we need to pull together, um. Like a panel of. Speakers. Um. See again.
Do we want it to be centered around, what was the name of the mentorship? Was it Alpha and Omega? I'm trying to remember. Um. Uh, I think yesterday I shared something about it last time. I wasn't recall. I can't remember.
Yeah, I also can't remember. Um, so Alpha Omega also has a mentorship? Is that what you're saying or? Um.
Yeah, I, so I wanted to know if that's the mentorship you were referring to.
Oh, oh, um. I guess we could include that, but OpenSSF, like, we ran kind of like a separate mentorship program with just OpenSSF projects this past summer. Um, and so we had like four different projects there. Uh. And so that's kind of more what I was thinking, um, was just focusing on the, on the OpenSSF one. Um, but you're right, if Alpha and Omega had mentorships in the past, we should include, I mean, we should cover as much as we can.
Um, so I, I think what we could do is, you know. From the last one we did, uh, from the last, um, submission. I, I think, um, why they didn't accept our session was probably, it was too, they felt like it was too basic. So maybe this time around, we want to make it look, you know, very, uh. Look very solid.
Yeah, I know what you mean. Um. Uh, so, um. Let me improve. Uh, I don't know what's happening here. Um. And the. Uh. I mean, do you have time to, to work on this, Ijoma, this week or, um?
Yeah, I can't wait even today, but then I have to, you know, have a full context.
Yeah.
On the direction we want to go when it comes to mentorship, what do we want? People to learn from our session, you know, that's going to drive the topic, the abstract, the description and everything else, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I almost wonder if we should, uh. Maybe not submit to CubeCon. EU, but to submit to, uh. Um, but to submit to like a later one, like a later conference.
Which one?
Um, so, let's see. Do any of these other, does Fostum, for example, have, oh, but Fostum also closes the same day, uh, October twelfth.
So we can submit to both then.
Yeah, I think we can. Um. There's also the.
There's an Open Source Summit.
There's the Open Source Summit. Uh, that one's in May, the Open Source Summit. North America is, is in May, right? That's the next one?
Yeah, in Minneapolis.
Yeah, I think it's in Minneapolis. Um, I was just looking at that. The CFP for that is not open yet, though.
Right, right.
I'm sorry.
And the next one, the European one, I think is in Prague in like September, October, something timeframe?
Oh, it's in Prague, man.
I know. Who doesn't wanna go to Prague?
I really like Prague. So, um, not that I don't like Minneapolis, I should say, I actually.
But it ain't no Prague.
It's not Prague. Actually, they share some similarities, right? I mean, they've got a river going through them, both and. Bridges and. And we can, green landscape around them. Um. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, no CFP for Open Source Summit yet, but that.
Right.
Yeah. I guess, to your point, Ijoma, like, it would be good to. Actually spend some more time and be thoughtful about, um, the, the questions that you raised, you know, what we want people to learn. Um, in general, how can we improve from our last, uh, improve our last submission? Um. And, yeah, cover those different pieces. Um. I, I think part of the reason why maybe our last submission seemed kind of basic was that we did it in a pretty rushed way. Um. So taking our time could be good.
Yeah, okay, we have five more days to go, so. I think we guys to do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, I'm personally not going to be able to help out a ton, um, so my bigger concern is finding the right. Um, number of like panelists for this, unless, um, you're comfortable doing this, um, on your own.
Okay, um, I could work on it and then you review.
Um. I will see if I have time. I frankly really have very little time this week, unfortunately. Um. Yeah, this is why I'm maybe trying to like push it to a little bit later, but no, um. It's not very long, so I could review, uh. Yeah, um, what I would like to do, what I would prefer to do is maybe see if someone like Cairo, because it's an EU, right, so. You know, Cairo is very, um. Passionate about the mentorship and he mentored one of the projects this summer. Um, so.
I could reach out to him on the channel. I think we have a channel, the last one we used.
Yeah, and I think even Sal is in that channel, if I remember.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Maybe even just those same people would. Yeah, would totally work. Okay. Uh. Sounds good. So, yeah, we can try. Um. Do you have access to the old, uh? Oh, here, we already have the, I'm gonna put this in the meeting notes and also in the chat here. Um.
Yeah.
We have the doc, um, with. The old CFP. We can use that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, this was the last one we used. We could make this better.
Yes, I, I do agree.
Okay, and probably get a better topic. It, it will still be driving at the same point, which is mentorship, but. Rained in a much better way. Hmm, yeah. We just, I'm going to work on the description and everything else and probably add two or three topic ideas and we can pick from.
Yeah. And I think the track we may want to target is, um. I'm trying to remind myself, where's the? Oh, here. Um, track descriptions. Yeah, so. I think this would either fit under Cloud Native Novice or Cloud Native Experience. Um. Uh, no, maybe not so much. The Native Experience, like Cloud Native Experience, probably more Cloud Native Novice, yeah.
Okay.
Um, this covers foundational concepts across multiple domains through introductory presentations. Um. Oh, but even this actually seems kind of technical. Uh. Attendees to these presentations can expect to learn core cloud native networking concepts. Storage for containerized workloads. Uh. So, hmm, do we think mentorship actually fits in here? Maybe. It says how to start contributing to communities and much more. So. I think it's worth a try in this, in this track.
Yeah, and what of, what of, um, Fostum? Or track should we?
Oh, um.
No, they have a lot of dev rooms. They have the security track as well. They have the community track as well. I'll check if they have, um, a mentorship track.
That would be great. Um. Call for stands. Um. I see. Hmm. Proposals for the main track. I don't see, um. I don't see any other. Dev rooms yet. I guess a dev room is what they are. Hmm. I see. Yeah, so I think a main track talk could fit here. Seems like the dev rooms won't issue calls for participation until. Um, until late October. So. We, we have some more time here, yeah. I frankly have not ever attended Fostum, so I'm not sure how it works, but, um. This sounds interesting.
Okay.
Okay, so maybe it makes sense to, uh, have like, um. Like, prepare the, prepare the CFP for CubeCon and then we can decide if, if it's ready or not. And if it's not ready, we try to, we submit it to Fostum instead. And Fostum is again November sixteenth, so there's some more time. Um.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, because I don't think mentorship is going to be its whole dev room. Um, I think that's the CFP that closes on the same day, October twelfth. Um, for the main track, if it's just a single presentation, then I think. Yeah, the main track makes sense. I can also ask, um, I don't know, yeah, what do you think, Stacy?
Oh, I was just like, wondering if maybe we should put a, and I can, I can take this action. I think I need to see an outreach to the community. To see if anyone is thinking about submitting developer room, um, because you could always be, or we, or anyone really could just say, oh, well, we're, let's. Propose a, a mentorship track or a community track, like developer room, right? Um, but I don't know if there's already some, something in the works with people maybe already in OpenSSF, so. Um, not necessarily organized by staff, but just organized by the community, cause I know a lot of folks do submit those kinds of proposals. But we don't always know about them, so maybe just asking, hey, is anybody doing this? And then could we join in on our track, maybe, or, sorry, a room?
Yeah.
Right.
It. Room makes it sound more closed, which I think is why I'm.
Yeah, dev rooms.
Yeah, a little confused, but, okay, so, um. I guess just, uh.
I can, I can make some posts in all of the working group channels, um, just to say, hey, is anyone submitting to Fostum developer rooms, right? Um, and then at least we can have an idea.
Yeah. Okay. But I think the, so, yeah.
I didn't mean to.
No, I'm sorry. Um, I, yeah, I think the developer rooms, right now, this is just the proposal, so. I guess, yeah. I guess, yeah, the call for participation then is when we would submit this panel.
Mm-hmm.
Is how I understood that, or, or no?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. That one's good. Um. So. Uh, do you think? That, um. Do you think that we can maybe have the next draft ready? Like, if you want me to review it, um, before I leave, probably Thursday, the ninth would, would be good. So that I have like between Thursday and Friday to review. Um, does that time work for you, Ijoma, or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you so much for, for taking this on. Um. Okay. Um. Cool. That's. Uh, is there anything else on, on this? Cool, so I guess, uh, Ijoma, you said you were going to post in, in that old, uh, group chat, um, just to kind of restart the conversation. Um, I can review the updated, um. The updated CFP submission, uh, between Thursday and Friday. Uh, and I guess Stacy, you said you were going to post about FOSDAM.
Yes, and I will also try and recruit for the office hours.
Ah, thank you. Um.
You bet.
And Ijiro, who dropped the call, will be editing part three of the blog post. Um. So, cool. Um, in terms of coverage, um, for the next two meetings or three while I'm gone, um. I think I'll just kind of, we, we can sort of chat with the other working group chairs and you, Stacy, about who can handle that. Or if we just cancel some of those meetings.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you all for joining today. Um, if there's nothing else, we can give people back, uh, twenty-six minutes.
Awesome, thank you both.
Thank you all.
Bye.
Have a great week.
Thank you, talk to you soon.
Bye-bye.